The board will now come to order. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingrascia. Alderman Coder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingrascia. Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderwoman Spencer. You have 15, Mr. President. You have a quorum.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Bishop Ernest Byrd from the Full Gospel Spiritual Temple.
Before I pray, I also want to acknowledge one of my special guests, one of my bishops that's visiting us in the United States, Bishop Delomo from Johannesburg, South Africa. This is his first time with us on this morning. Let us pray. Our Father which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, that will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our debts as we forgive our debtors, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from all that is sin and evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory. The Lord is my shepherd, and I shall not want. He maketh me to lie down in green pastures. He leaded me beside the still waters. He restored my soul. He leaded me in the path of righteousness for its name's sake. Yea, though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will fear no evil; for thou art with me. Thy rod and thy staff they comfort me. Thou preparest a table before me in the presence of my enemy. Thou anointeth my head with oil, and my cup runneth over. Surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all the days of my life, and I shall dwell in the house of the Lord forever. Father God, in the name of Jesus, Lord God, we come to you to say thank you for waking us up this morning, clothe in our right mind. We thank you for the activities of our limbs and for health and strength, oh God. God, we thank you for allowing us to make it safe on the streets to get down here to City Hall. Father God, and even as this governing legislation body assembled to discuss and make legislation concerning the citizens of this city, God, we pray for unity. We pray for that everyone is in a sound mind. We act that we come together as one, and we counsel the assignment of division within this body. We counsel the assignment of the division of the leadership of this city. We pray for our mayor. We pray for our president, the board of aldermen, and their families. We pray for every first responder, the police officers, the firefighters, the EMS staff, and every employee of the city of St. Louis that is a first responder. And we pray that even as we're in the hottest months of the year, that the senior citizens will have cooling environments to be able to live. We pray for safe communities. We counsel the assignment of killing and murdering in our streets and our community. We allow you to take over our community, and we know that this is a safe and pleasant community. We pray for single moms and single dads. We pray for those behind the prison walls. And we act that even as this meeting continues to go forward, that we do the business that we have been elected and called to do. These are all of the blessings I ask in Jesus' name, and in Jesus' name I pray.
Bishop, I really, really appreciate the prayer. Let's give him a big round of applause and thank you, and also to his visitor. Thank you so much for coming. Introduction of honored guests. Any introduction of honored guests? Alderman from the 22nd.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I have two honored guests this morning. Mr. Chris Pickle with AT&amp;T and Ms. Janice Mohammed Key, who's a longtime resident of the 22nd Ward.
Alderwoman from the 28th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to have as my honored guest today the Eastern Missouri group of the Sierra Club, who's up in the gallery with us today. Welcome.
Welcome, Sierra Club. Alderman from the 23rd.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have Fred Circe from the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters. I would also like to have Emily Post from the Home Builders Association, and I also certainly welcome the group, the Sierra Group.
Alderman from the 12th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to introduce Mr. Jeff Hines and Samuel Adams from the Carpenters. I'd also like to introduce Chris Pickle from AT&amp;T, and I'm sure somebody already introduced Mr. Alfred Demetrius, or Demetrius Alfred, president of Local 73.
Alderman from the 21st.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to have as my special guest Mr. Persa Green III, the Vice President of Fire. And although she is not here in the chambers with us, I would like to have as my special guest the Honorable Mary Lyda Croson, who earlier this week had a grand reopening of the arch, and clearly, the arch is for whites only today.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from the 14th.
Good morning, Mr. President, and esteemed colleagues. I'd like to introduce as my guest this morning, Mr. Demetrius Alfred from Firefighters Local 73.
Alderman from the 3rd.
Morning, Mr. President. Morning, everybody. I'd like to have as my special guest Candace and her daughter from the 3rd Ward, and Ms. Darla Latham.
How you all doing? Welcome. Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the 18th.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to introduce the committeemen from the 18th Ward, Mr. Jesse Todd, and several residents from the 18th Ward up in the balcony.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Alderman from the 10th, I'd like to wrap this up.
Hey, Mr. President, members of the board. We're gathered here on July the 6th. It was on this day in 1932, the national outrage when the postage stamp went up to three cents from two cents. And in 1957, John Lennon and Paul McCartney met for the first time on this day. But more importantly, this is a combination of holidays. It's National Fried Chicken Day and World Kiss Day. So go out and kiss the Colonel later. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Approval of the minutes.
We have the minutes from May 11th, 2018, Mr. President.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on approval of minutes.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the April 11th minutes be approved.
Move by the Alderman from the 18th, second by the Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Copies of the report of city officials have been placed in all of the aldermen's mailboxes. That is the extent of the report of city officials, Mr. President.
With dispensing line items seven, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Will dispense with line items eight through 10? Oh, Alderman from the 18th?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to take Board Bill 53, Committee Substitute 56, and 57 off of the informal calendar.
Mr. Clerk, please place Board Bills 53, 56, and 57 at the end of the regular perfection calendar? Or you want it on the?
On the consent calendar with it.
Perfection. Place it on the, place those three on the perfection consent count.
So noted.
Would anyone like to take any further bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any further bills off of any of our informal calendars? We've dispensed with line items eight through 10, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill 94, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for the 1420 to 22 Union Boulevard. Board Bill 95, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for the 4213 Maryland Avenue. Board Bill 96, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingrascia, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for the 2200 through 2218 blocks of Washington Avenue. Board Bill 97, sponsored by Alderman Moore, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for the 4338, 4341, and 4345 blocks of Evans Avenue. That is the extent of first reading of board bills, Mr. President.
Reference to committee.
Board Bill 96, housing, urban development, and zoning. Board Bill 94, 95, and 97, neighborhood development. That is the extent of reference to committee, Mr. President.
Second reading.
Board Bill Number 67, sponsored by Alderman Coder, an ordinance to terminate and dissolve the Orpheum Community District pursuant to Community Improvement District Act, Section 67.1401 through 671575 of the Rezabai statutes of Missouri. Board Bill 90, sponsored by Alderman Coder, an ordinance amending ordinance numbers 69146 and 69153, authorizing other related actions and containing a severability clause. That is the extent of second reading.
We'll dispense with line item 14, perfection consent.
Board Bill 54, Committee Substitute as amended, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, an ordinance adopting the 2018 International Code for One and Two Family Dwellings with amendments, including appendices E, F, G, H, J, K, M, R, S, and T, repealing ordinance 68789 and containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and emergency clause. Board Bill 55, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, an ordinance adopting the 2018 International Fire Code with amendments, including appendices B and C, repealing ordinance 69600 and containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and emergency clause. Board Bill 58, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, an ordinance adopting the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code with amendments, repealing ordinance 68792 and containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and emergency clause. Board Bill 59, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, an ordinance pertaining to the Mechanical Code of the City, repealing ordinance 68639 and ordinance 68847, adopting the 2018 International Mechanical Code with amendments, including appendix A, and containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and emergency clause. Board Bill 60, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, an ordinance adopting the 2018 International Fuel/Gas Code with amendments, repealing ordinance 6868638 and containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and emergency clause. Board Bill 61, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, an ordinance adopting the 2017 National Electrical Code with amendments, repealing ordinance 68831, containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and emergency clause. Board Bill 91, sponsored by Alderwoman Navarro and Alderman Williamson, an ordinance approved and recommended by the Preservation Board and Planning Commission pertaining to the Skinker de Bolivar-Caitlin Track Parkview Historic District, amending ordinance 57688, repealing and replacing certain standards for the Skinker de Bolivar-Caitlin Track Parkview Historic District. Board Bill 53, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, an ordinance adopting the 2018 International Building Code with amendments, including appendices E, F, G, H, I, and J, repealing ordinance 68610, ordinance 68788, and ordinance 69271 and containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and emergency clause. Board Bill 56, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, an ordinance adopting the 2018 International Existing Building Code with amendments, including appendices A, B, and C, repealing ordinance 68790 and containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and emergency clause. Board Bill Number 57, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, an ordinance adopting the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code with amendments, repealing ordinance 68791 and containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and, and emergency clause. That is the extent of the perfection consent calendar, Mr. President.
Alderman from the, Alderwoman from the 28th?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move Board Bill 91 off the perfection consent calendar and to the informal perfection calendar.
All right. Mr. Clerk, please make note of that. Board Bill 91 from the list, move that to the informal calendar.
So noted.
All right. Alderman from the 18th, you recognized on the perfection consent motion?
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the perfection consent calendar.
Move by the Alderman from the 18th, second by the Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
We have none, Mr. President.
Third reading consent.
Board Bill Number 10, sponsored by Alderman Coder and Alderwoman Ingrascia, an ordinance pertaining to the zoning code requiring that certain uses that are regulated by a plat and petition process under the License Code and Building Code be made a conditional use, prohibited use, or used by right under the zoning code. Board Bill 32, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, an ordinance concerning certain business license regulations set forth in Title 8, which require the completion of a plat and neighborhood consent petition prior to obtaining an occupancy permit, repealing ordinances 56788, 57294, 58645 pertaining to arcades, containing a severability clause, and an effective date clause. That is the extent of the third reading consent calendar, Mr. President.
Mr. Clerk, hold. I'm told that the Alderman from the 18th may want to suspend. Yes, please proceed.
Mr. President, I would move to suspend the rules in order to place the following bills on the third reading consent calendar. Board Bill 53, Committee Sub, 56, Committee Sub, 57, Committee Sub, Board Bill 54, 55, 58, 59, 60, and 61.
So that's 53, Committee Sub, 56, Committee Sub, 57, Committee Sub, 54, 55, 58, 59, and 60?
And 61.
And 61. It's been moved by the Alderman from the 18th, and second by the Alderman from the 23rd and the 26th. Do you have the list? Alderman from the 18th, could you repeat the board bills one more time so we're sure that the clerk has the completed list? It's 53, Committee Sub, 56, 57, 54, 55, 58, 59, 60, and 61.
That's, you want me to say those again, Mr. President?
Just to make, just to assure that the clerk has the?
The bills to be included in the motion are 53, Committee Sub, 56, Committee Sub, 57, Committee Sub, 54, Committee, Committee Sub as amended, 55, Committee Sub, 58, 59, 60, and 61.
Shall I proceed, Mr. President?
Do you have the completed list?
Yes, sir.
All right, it's been moved, been moved by the Alderman from the 18th, second by the Alderman from the 25th. That we spend our rules for the purposes of moving the aforementioned bills to the third reading consent calendar. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingrascia. Alderman Coder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderman Coder. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Green. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Boyd. You have 21 aye votes, Mr. President.
By your vote, stay in the motion of the Alderman from the 18th, and place the aforementioned bills on the third reading consent calendar.
So noted.
Mr. Clerk, please place all those bills up till, till in a third reading consent calendar, a third reading consent.
All right. Board Bill Number 10, I'm sorry. Board Bill Number 53, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy.
Mr. Clerk, start at 10, 32, and then the ones that were in.
Board Bill Number 10, sponsored by Alderman Coder and Ingrascia, an ordinance pertaining to the zoning code requiring that certain uses that are regulated by a plat and petition process under the License Code and Building Code be made a conditional use, prohibited use, or used by right under the zoning code. Board Bill 32, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, an ordinance containing certain business license regulations set forth in Title 8, which require the completion of a plat and neighborhood consent petition prior to obtaining an occupancy permit, repealing ordinance 56788, 57294, and 58645 pertaining to arcades, containing a severability clause, and an effective date. Board Bill 53, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, an ordinance adopting the 2018 International Building Code with amendments, including appendices E, F, G, H, I, and J, repealing ordinance 68610, ordinance 68788, and ordinance 69271 and containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and emergency clause. Board Bill 56, Committee Substitute, an ordinance adopting the 2018 International Existing Building Code with amendments, including appendices A, B, and C, repealing ordinance 68790 and containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and emergency clause. Board Bill 57, Committee Substitute, an ordinance adopting the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code with amendments, repealing ordinance 68791 and containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and emergency clause. Board Bill 54, Committee Substitute as amended, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, an ordinance adopting the 2018 International Residential Code for One and Two Family Dwellings and with amendments, including appendices E, F, G, H, J, K, M, R, S, and T, repealing ordinance 68789 and containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and emergency clause. Board Bill 55, Committee Substitute, an ordinance adopting the 2018 International Fire Code with amendments, including appendices A, appendices B and C, repealing ordinance 69600 and containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and emergency clause. Board Bill 58, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, an ordinance adopting the 2018 International Energy Conservation Code with amendments, repealing ordinance 68792 and containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and emergency clause. Board Bill 60, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, an ordinance adopting the 2018 International Fuel/Gas Code with amendments, repealing ordinance 68638 and containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and emergency clause. Board Bill 61, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, an ordinance adopting the 2017 National Electrical Code with amendments, repealing ordinance 68831, containing a penalty clause, severability clause, savings clause, and emergency clause.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the third reading consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 18th, second by the Alderman from the 28th. Any discussion? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Ingrascia. Alderman Coder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vacaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderman Coder. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Green. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Boyd. Alderwoman Boyd. You have 21 aye votes, Mr. President. You have 20 aye votes and one present, Mr. President.
By your vote, you stay in the motion. The Alderman from the 18th and third read, and finally passed the aforementioned bills. We'll dispense with line item 18.
Report of the enrollment committee. Board Bill 32, Committee Substitute, and Board Bill Number 10.
I think you have some more.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Board Bill 53, Committee Substitute. Board Bill 56, Committee Substitute. Board Bill 57, Committee Substitute. Board Bill 54, Committee Substitute as amended. Board Bill 55, Committee Substitute. Board Bill 58. Board Bill 59. Board Bill 60. Eight, Board Bill 87.
Mr. Clerk, Mr. Clerk, I'm going to ask you to start that, that enrollment committee list, top to bottom again.
Board Bill 87 was not supposed to be?
Yes, I know. That's why I'm asking you to start, start the list.
Board Bill 53, Committee Substitute. Board Bill 56, Committee Substitute. Board Bill 57, Committee Substitute. Board Bill 54, Committee Substitute as amended. As amended. Board Bill 55, Committee Substitute. Board Bill 58. Board Bill 59. Board Bill 60. Board Bill 61. That is the extent of the report of the enrollment committee.
Did you get Board Bill 32, Committee? Did you get Board Bill 32, Committee Substitute, and Board Bill 10? From the original.
Board Bill 10.
32.
And Board Bill 32, Committee Substitute.
Yes.
That is the extent of the report of the Enrollment Committee.
All other business being suspended, President shall an open session of fixers signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on motion for the Courtesy Resolutions Calendar.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for adoption of the Courtesy Resolution Calendar.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, second about Alderman from the 22nd. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. First reading of resolutions.
Resolution Number 79, Sponsored by Alderman Volmer, An Enterprise Zone for the Barra Specialty Contractors. That is the extent of the first reading of resolutions, Mr. President.
Alderman from the 10th, you recognize on first reading of resolutions, number 79.
Thank you, Mr. President. I request that we move Resolution 79 to the HUDs Committee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 10th, entertain a second on that motion. Second about Alderman from the 22nd. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Ms. Clerk, please assign Resolution 79 to HUDs.
So noted.
Second reading.
We have no second reading.
Misleading some unfinished business.
We have no unfinished business, Mr. President.
The announcements, I'm recognizing Alderman from the 18th. Alderman from the 18th.
This is to close the meeting, Mr. President.
Yes. No, we're not doing announcements right now. We're going to back to announcements. All right, Alderman from the 18th.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move that the Board of Aldermen meeting be closed to the public under the provisions of Section 610021, in order to permit members of the Board to discuss matters related to the hiring, firing, discipline, or promoting of employees of the Board of Aldermen.
Moved by Alderman from the 18th, second about Alderman from the 26th and 25th. Any discussion? Ms. Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Agassia. Alderman Coder. Alderwoman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Volmer. Alderwoman Martin. Alderman Arnowitz. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Green. Alderman Oldenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy.
Aye.
Alderwoman Davis. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Bakaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn.
Aye.
Alderman Williamson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderwoman Navarro. President Reed.
Aye.
Alderwoman Middlebrook. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderman Coder. Alderwoman Martin. Alderwoman Murphy. Alderwoman Green. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Boyd. You have 21 aye votes, Mr. President.
By your very standing motion, Alderman from the 18th, the board will now go on to close session. I'll ask everyone who's not a part of the staff and who's not a member of this Board of Aldermen to please exit the chambers. I'll ask the STL TV if you all can turn off all of the cameras, and we will let you know when we reconvene our open session. Get the, set the levels. STL TV, please let me know when you're ready and live. And I'll gavel us back in. The board will now come back to order. Announcements. Any announcements? Alderman from the 23rd. I've been waiting a while for this one. So, we're going to have a legislative meeting, if you're on legislative committee, Tuesday, right after the public safety meeting. We're going to be on at about 11 o'clock, or just shortly as soon as they end the public safety. We're going to be discussing Board Bill 73, and for those that are interested, we're also going to put a subcommittee together on Alderwoman Navarro's resolution to look into what it would look like if we went to 14 wards. So if you have an interest in that, all are welcome. All right, any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the first.
The board, we will be having a public employees meeting on Thursday at 10 o'clock. We're going to bring Mr. Frank's in to talk about Me Too, how to make complaints if you're being harassed in the city, and what we can do to make sure our city employees have a safe environment to work in.
All right, perfect, thank you.
And also, I just want to, at appropriate time. I want to address the arch ribbon cutting. So if this is not the appropriate time.
This is the appropriate time.
I was very sad to see that picture. I just told, I just sent many of you an email, and going to be sending the rest of you all, not this Saturday, but the Saturday, next Saturday on the 14th, that will be the 54th anniversary of Percy Green climbing the arch. I am putting a little something together that includes inclusion with everybody. I sent it first to black elected officials, but I'm sending it right behind to the white elected officials, and I send it to everybody, especially those people that were in that photo. I heard the excuses about, well, we invited Darlene and Tashar, and they sent white representatives. But I think that when we elect people, they ought to have some common sense, and there's some optics that don't look good, and that was a horrible looking optic, and I don't, so, and they all saw it. And this is what being scared to challenge your own power looks like, okay? We had the governor, US senators, mayor, nobody said, I don't, because since that was Sharon Tyus, I would have said, I'm out of this picture, okay? I'm not taking a picture that looks like that. When we're trying to celebrate inclusion and things like that, that's not what you're seeing. And so I don't just blame the mayor, like some people do, because she was not the only person there. Everybody else that was there saw that same thing, and nobody, not only did they not do it, who are your staff members, okay, that would let you do something like this? And especially that the, this city has had so many opportunities to try to get it together, this is what's wrong with St. Louis, okay, because they don't get it. You do not send out these messages, and the reason Mr. Green, who we just had here a few weeks ago, was climbing the arch is because they did not hire black people to work at the arch, okay? I'm going to now ask for what was their minority inclusion, because I can almost guarantee you with your tone deafness that you probably didn't hire black people in the job either. So it's not okay to have an excuse that Lacy Clay couldn't come, or Tashar, or Darlene sent white people. I don't know why all of us were not invited, because we spent all of our tax dollars, and if we can get this together and it's short notice, I want everybody, I'm going to tell you, it's going to be in the afternoon next Saturday, I want everybody to be a part of this. I want especially those people who thought that was okay. Claire McCaskill, Governor Parsons, Lyda Cruz, and all of you, I want you all to know this is not okay, and I don't think anybody in here, black or white, thought that was a good photo to send out for St. Louis. And you're our, we even had somebody nationally here, we had a governor, we had the city, mayor, we had Steve Stinger. There are black people that sit on their city county council that are my friends, they're black state reps. It's just too many black elected officials that you now say, oh my God, well Darlene and Tashar and Lacy didn't. They're not the only black elected officials, and if it wasn't, you always go into the black minister's church. In a few days, you will be calling all of those black ministers that you always usually call when you need to come to their church. You'll be calling them same ministers. I hope every last one of them says, no, 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 no. What about the civil rights organizations? We got the Urban League, we got the NAACP. Many years ago, when I was the chair of the Black Elected Officials for the City of St. Louis, and Governor Cornahan came to a meeting, he was getting ready to run for US Senate then, and I got on him about, I still think we should elect judges, because they do all over the state of Missouri, and he said to me, well Sharon can't do it in St. Louis because it might be politics. And I said, oh, so they don't have it where you, you mean they don't have politics? You mean the judges somehow run and there's no politics involved? And then I also challenged him about not having enough black people work for him, and he said to me, I can't find them, I can't find any qualified people. And again, my answer is always to the people. Fire those people who work for you, because you don't have the right people working for you to make sure you don't make that mistake again. But these people who are in there were elected officials, and if you're an elected official, you represent white, black, Asian, everybody else. And when you look down the line and see all white people in, about something in this kind of event, and you think that's all right, that's, you have a problem also besides your staff. You need to really, when we start talking about all this, we're going to do better, we need to make sure that these people that are elected to represent all of us need to have some kind of Starbucks moment where they maybe get together and close down and say, how did we do that? Look at your own, hire somebody to talk to you about that, because that was absolutely awful, and I heard from my friends from New York, California, all over, and especially because they lived in St. Louis, saying, what the heck are you all doing in St. Louis? And I don't have anything to add to what they were doing, except for I will take up for the mayor in this case and say, it wasn't just all her fault, because there were other elected officials too, and they were all at fault equally to me.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from the 19th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. First, I want to share with you that in the 19th ward on tomorrow from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m., we're having a health fair that is being sponsored by St. John's Hope House, as well as the JBL Neighborhood Association with the whole new area. And we will have every type of exam that you can think of, eye, dental, prostate, everything will be there, along with entertainment, a number of people will come and speak on different topics. It'll be held in Chambers Park, that's right off of Delmar and Compton. And hopefully, people will be able to come and use the services, and if nothing else, come and meet some of the people who represent you in city services. I'd like to end very quickly. I really can't say too much, because when I woke up and I looked at the news and I saw that display, it really broke my heart, because I don't understand. I don't understand. I don't care who was invited and didn't show up. If I had been standing out there anywhere, I wouldn't have allowed that to take place. I would have got somebody from just walking down the street, say, come here, come here for a second, get in this picture, because they don't have to be elected, they are citizens, and citizens' dollars were spent on that as well. So I just don't get it, and I don't know how we can progress if we keep falling back, because it's really not about anything other than let's be right about what we do always. So if you're thinking right always, you won't make those mistakes. And as the Alderwoman from the first ward said, you can't just blame the mayor. There were too many other people who we thought had common sense standing there as well. Thank you.
All right. Alderman from the 26th.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. Resolution Number 80, Alderman Terry Kennedy wanted to be added on to that resolution as a co-sponsor, and anyone else that has any interest, just let the clerk know.
Absolutely. Alderman from the 25th, Alderwoman from the first, Alderman, Alderwoman from the sixth, Alderwoman from the 19th, third, ninth, 22nd, I called you already, 14th. Well, no, we, yeah, we are.
We didn't read it.
Yeah, we can't do a motion right now. The best thing to do is just let the clerk know so the clerk could make note of that.
Right, and this is reference to, can I just say the title?
Yes, you can.
Okay. This is reference to Resolution 80, is demanding the decency and the respect and dignity of all persons of our nation. That's what it is, Resolution Number 80, thank you.
All right, excellent. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 18th, you have an announcement?
I do, Mr. President. If I may speak a little bit more on the statements from the Alderwoman from the first.
Absolutely.
First of all, you know, the Gateway Arch Expansion Project is problematic to me to begin with. You know, they call the thing the Gateway to the West, or the westward expansion. Now, if you were Native American, that is an insult to your face, because really what it is, is a monument, if you dedicate it to that, what you're saying is that you're dedicating it to European imperialism and colonialism. So that in itself is problematic. They could have said that that arch is dedicated to the diversity of America, but that's not what they said. They said it was dedicated to the expansion of America westward, taking other people's land. It is problematic from the beginning. Secondly, someone in their great wisdom saw the need to place a statue of Lewis and Clark on the river. They left off Sacagawea, the Native American woman, and left off York, the black man that was with them. What a missed, but they did put the dog on there. What a missed opportunity. What a missed opportunity to show the diversity of this region, this city, and America in general. Native Americans, Europeans, African Americans, but they got the dog. So it's problematic from the beginning. Unfortunately, based upon that history, it is not surprising what we saw when it came to that ribbon cutting. Then just to be able to get people of color to be able to work on the thing, it took a protest and somebody chaining themselves to one of the layers. And then we come to 2018 with a situation that is already problematic, and here we see a ribbon cutting without any body of color in it whatsoever. Now, speaking as the floor majority leader, it is insulting to me that they did not invite this Board of Aldermen. I don't believe not one invitation was sent to this body that had to allocate money to make sure that thing happened. So somebody, somewhere, needs a different orientation, needs to be taught to think differently, to think in a way that is more inclusive than exclusionary. It seems like they invited a special club that did not include the 28 members and 29 members with this president to come to that activity. When I saw it, I was moved to say, we need to do something else. We really need to show the diversity of this city, and I thought that this Board of Aldermen should do something itself, that we should go there, not necessarily have a ribbon cutting, but at least. but at least acknowledge the individuals that made sure that that thing was built more equitably than what that ribbon cutting showed. And possibly even think about petitioning the federal government to give it a different name other than the National West Expansion Memorial. What sensitivity, a greater sensitivity America needs to have, that's like saying we support the name, the Redskins, on a football team. If we really want to make this a better place to live, we have to be more sensitive to those kinds of things, not just pointing the finger at each other and saying, you bad for it, because I'm not trying to do that. We have to put forward recommendations and alternatives, so that those who think in that way can begin to think in another way, just to criticize them is not enough to me. What is the alternative? We have to push that, and I think as a body, we can do that. So, then I highly support, because I was heading in that direction too, Alderwoman from the first, that we need to do something to show the diversity of this city, and to point out that that kind of behavior is not tolerated in this city, and that we see a different vision of this community. So, Mr. President, that's me on my soapbox for a moment, and I appreciate you giving me that point of special privilege to be able to speak on this matter. But this Board in itself is making changes, and is finding itself more favorable on certain issues that we could never get past before, and I think we should take the opportunity to enhance that, and be an example to this region of what it really could mean to have inclusion and diversity. Real inclusion does not mean you just have some faces of color, or faces of diversity, in an institution that is still controlled by the majority group. Real inclusion means that you bring in the diversity of ideas and allow those ideas to shape the structure in the institution in which you're trying to find diversity, not just having a face sitting up there in the same structure that was racist, or sexist, or homophobic from the beginning, but a real structural difference is what we're looking for, and I think with our African-American Automatic Caucus and the others of goodwill on this Board, we can, in fact, show that kind of diversity and leadership for this region. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the eighth.
Just quickly, I think that's a great idea to do next Saturday's event. I will not be in town to be present for that. There is an event today at noon as well that some organize, I'm not one of the organizers, but just wanted to let you all know that you are welcome. It is, it is not just black folks, it is not just a ribbon cutting, there is a full program that they are putting together to showcase the diversity of our region, and so I think multiple of these events is a great idea. If you want to come down, they're starting at noon down at the Arch Grounds today as well. So, just a secondary invitation, I don't mean to overstep, just, but a secondary invitation there for this one today.
Alderwoman from the eighth, I mean, sixth.
I knew what you meant, I'm short and --
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. President. To just piggyback on the Alderwoman from the eighth, if anyone wants to hop in an Uber with me to get down, State Representative Bruce Franks did invite us all to be a part of the ribbon cutting at twelve o'clock today at the Arch Grounds, and I'm really grateful for Alderwoman Tyus and Alderwoman Kennedy standing up today to make a statement, I think that what we all were feeling on the issue.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move that the Aldermen from the second, fourth, fifth, seventh, thirteenth, fifteenth, twentieth, and twenty-seventh be excused for necessary absence.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the twenty-sixth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alderman from the eighteenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of the Board, I move that the Board adjourns until Friday, June thirteenth, ten AM.
Moved by Alderman from the eighteenth, second by Alderman from the, from the tenth, the twenty-fifth, and the twenty-sixth. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I think, he meant July, July. Stand adjourned.